Welcome, everyone. Welcome, everyone. Please, if you -- there are some seats on the front, and particularly if you have trouble hearing, being closer to the front is better because for some reason, the conversations in the back of the room carry forward better than the conversations up here carry out, apparently. So, just so you know. So, welcome to the Select Board meeting of October 9th. We are in the third floor of the fire facility, and we have a full house tonight, which is really wonderful. My name is Jeanne Jenkins, and I have the pleasure of chairing this board. I'll turn to my fellow board members and have them introduce themselves.
Good evening. Sarah Parent, I've been away for a few weeks for work, and I'm happy to be back at home in Bennington. Good to see you all.
I'm Gary Corey.
Good evening. My name is Jim Carroll.
Hi, Tom Haley.
I'm Jean Conner.
I'm Ed Woods.
Excellent. And also with us tonight, we have our town manager, Stu Hurt. We have Nancy Lively, who takes excellent minutes every single meeting, this end. And we have Josh Boucher, who is very faithful in making sure that Cat TV covers these meetings live every two weeks. So, thank you all. We'll begin tonight, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. Jim, would you lead us?
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Thank you very much, Jim. And now, Tom, would you read our vision statement that guides our work?
I will. Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everything, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much. All right, so we move on to the consent agenda. Would someone make a motion to accept the agenda for the purposes of discussion?
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
All right. Thank you. Did you hear Jim seconded? Any comments on the consent agenda, either the minutes or the warrants? I have just one on page six. I just want to clarify on composting that the last bullet on line 208, it's the state law not just to encourage composting, but it's the state law that all commercial operations and homeowners are required to compost. So, it's a requirement rather than a recommendation. Any other comments? None? All right. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Great. That brings us to a very exciting public comment list. Good heavens. All right, so, what I think I'd like to do, there are a fair number of people here who are planning to speak on hometown heroes. So, I'm going to ask, it looks like Billy Andrew and Kelly Carroll are sort of convening this group. Is that right? Yeah, maybe, sort of. Would all the people wishing to speak on hometown hero, please come up? So, our rules for public comment are, one, things not on the agenda. Each agenda, each, generally, each person gets three minutes. If each one of you speaks for three minutes, we will be here for a really long time. So, what I would ask is that, as you come up, think about, if you have something that's that adds to the comments that are made, please feel free to make those. Ed will keep, is our timekeeper, and he will try and keep us to three minutes. If there's something that absolutely hasn't been said, that is, you know, important to say, we'll bend those rules, but let's, you know, let's, let's try, let's try that and see how it goes, okay? So, the hometown hero group, Billy Andrew, Kelly Carroll, Ed Coulter, ooh, Tref LeBlanc?
I want all the writers, the Legion writers and the VFW writers.
Okay, you guys may, yeah, so.
Come on up. Pulling it together.
Oh, good. So, you didn't all sign up? Okay, this is a relief.
You would be here together.
Wow, you're a great bunch. I'm hoping that Cat TV will get a good view of everybody that's up here because it's quite the group.
Mary, did you want to come up?
I know all of us that we're going to let just Kelly speak for everybody.
Okay.
And then they'll add if I miss anything.
Okay, perfect.
My name is Kelly Carroll, and I'm from Bennington, and I am speaking on behalf of the American Legion Post 13 Riders and the VFW Post 1332 Riders. As you know, both organizations do a lot to support veterans and our Bennington community. Together, we are trying to collaborate on a hometown hero banner project. You may have seen these banners hanging proudly in several other communities throughout New England and New York. The idea behind these banners is to honor our local military heroes. Military heroes who have passed on and military heroes who are still with us today. Our hometown hero banners would be 24 inches by 48 inches and are made of durable, commercial-grade vinyl. We had hoped to have them displayed on Main Street, but we had spoken with the Better Bennington Corporation, and the children's art banners on Main Street will be in place for two years. We thought we might be able to have some on Route 7 in Kosher Drive down by the American Legion and Walmart, so we reached out to the State Highway Department, and this is where it gets complicated. Hometown hero banners in memory of a deceased hero might be allowed, but a banner of a hero still living would not. And then, to be in compliance with the state statutes, the banners would have to be rotated with a new memorial banner every two weeks. I mean, that's not realistic. There, the state's recommendation was to find heavily trafficked roads locally instead of state highways, and that is what brings us here tonight. We'd like to start with hometown hero banners on North Street and South Street, working down towards the Vermont Veterans Home. This is a project that will have no cost to the town or the taxpayer, other than whatever is required to review and approve the project. We estimate about $125 per banner, including the bracket. We plan to do some fundraising to assist with the cost, and if they want to, families can also purchase a hometown hero banner in memory of their loved one. Dee Coletti did all of the research on these banners, and unfortunately, she had a prior commitment and couldn't be here tonight, but I'm sure she'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Veterans Day is next month, and we're really hoping to get some traction before then, so for tonight, we'd like to ask you for two things. Number one, your support. We realize that this is only public comment, and we will gladly come back to answer any questions that you have if you'd like to make this an agenda item. And number two, we'd like to know what is our next step? Is it a meeting with Stu or the BBC? What do we do next to make our hometown hero banner project a reality?
Great. Is there, thank you, Kelly. Is there anyone else?
Kelly, that was exactly three minutes. Nice job. So, as our chair said, so, we're open for things that didn't get covered, so we've stopped the clock.
Yes, and now, we're open for anything that didn't get covered. Yeah, Kelly, did you practice that? It was right at the moment.
She is amazing. I will never do that again.
You only have to do it once in life, you know?
It's nice to support our heroes because we enjoy the freedom that we have.
Please come forward because you have to come, you have to come to the microphone so that Cat TV can capture it.
I just made a comment. My name is Cindy Legg. I'm just saying that it's nice to honor our veterans, our hometown heroes, because we enjoy the freedom that we have today because of their service yesterday and today and tomorrow. That's it.
So, what we can say is, yeah, I'm happy that you recognize that this is public comment, so we can't have a discussion now, which is just as well because it sounds like we need to do some research. Normally, what we would say is, go speak with the BBC, and it sounds like you've already done that. So, it sounds to me like we probably, given you've already done a lot of the research that we would normally do, and the banners are 24 by 48, is that right? I think, I'm thinking that maybe what we should do is take this back to town staff and BBC, and then reach back out to determine whether it needs to be an agenda item, which I don't know that it does. You think it does?
I would think it needs to be an agenda. I think it's going to need your approval to place these banners for a time.
To wherever we decide to put them? Okay, okay, okay. So, before next meeting, then, it feels like that we should do some more research to follow up on the good work that you guys have already done, so that we have, so that we have a plan and that we can share it with you before the next meeting, so, so we can move forward.
I would, I would think it would be fantastic if whoever represents the group, Kelly or you and Bill, meet with me in my office tomorrow, Wednesday, to talk a little bit about the actual design, how we're going to hang these. It appears to me that we obviously don't have those light poles that go all the way out, so we're looking at other opportunities, I imagine, if we're trying to get all the way down to the veterans' home. So, I think we need to meet to talk this through.
Can I also ask, I, the, the children's banners, I thought they were on North and South Street as well.
They are.
Are they not very far down, but they do, but they're right at the crossroads, right?
Generally, the banner program only uses the historic lights, the downtown lighting system.
I see.
And it sounds to me like this wants to be longer than that?
Eventually.
Well, I mean, the pole itself, you're saying, would be longer than that?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so, does that work to have a meeting with, with Stu in the next couple of days? Oh, super.
Stu, I'll get you Dee Coletti's contact information.
Okay.
I'll connect the two of you.
Okay. Thank you. So, we can pass this around and then make sure it comes to you. Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So, they can gander. All right. All right, so, next up, Clark, you want, yes, Clark, you're up next to talk on Purple Heart solidarity with Israel.
Good evening, Clark Adams of Bennington. I know that we declared Bennington a Purple Heart community a few months ago, and there was a discussion that time about signage reflecting that status. I'm just wondering, what's the status of that signage? And if there are some issues, whether it be cost or whatever, we'd like to hear about it because I, I think there may be some external funding sources for it that presented to a certain group that just left here. My next concern or what I'd like is a proclamation statement from Select Board representing the people of Bennington here in solidarity with the people of Israel who have suffered a horrendous, catastrophic attack on their country, which we all know is ongoing. And, you know, especially in the light of Bennington's mission statement, there's, there's no place in our existence for hatred and antisemitism and outright murder of women and children. So, I'm asking a proclamation or some public support for the people of Israel from this organization. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to say you did follow up on Purple Heart.
We've actually, we've actually purchased two banners, one that would be placed in front of the town offices, one in front of the VFW in August on that specific date, recognizing the Purple Heart community. I did indicate at the meeting the last time that the state of Vermont prohibits some signage that is not specifically allowed by law, so I, I haven't gone in that direction at this time.
Okay. It's just that I notice pretty much every time I drive down 7, the first thing I see when I hit Husick is, we're a Purple Heart community, and also, I believe, Cambridge. So, it's one of those things that keeps popping up. Officiousness bordering on stupidity if there's some sort of law that prohibits we, the people of Bennington, from honoring those who shed blood for America. I can't think of a valid reason not to, not to have a sign that says, "We honor and respect their sacrifices." Just, just my opinion.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, let me see. Let's go. Nancy White, Ben High.
Nancy White, Bennington. A week ago, the town office approved the Ben High petition. Over 500 registered Bennington voters signed the petition. Citizens worked hard to go out and get the signatures. It is Vermont state law that required our officials give Bennington voters 30 days to sign a petition. If 5% of the voters signed the petition, it means whether or not, well, it means the voters will decide, rather than our officials, if Chris Gilbert should get the senior center building. The first time this petition popped up was about six days after the first Ben High meeting a year and a half ago. Many people never saw it. It made no sense that 500 people would be asked to sign a petition six days after the first meeting, but that's what our officials did, and they covered themselves legally. I'd like to know why this isn't on the agenda for a public discussion. People who signed kept saying they want more information, they don't know enough about the project. Other people are upset of the cost of the project, and they don't understand why it's going forward. I, I think we need to have meetings where people can vote, get out and vote logically and understand both sides of this. So, are you willing to hold a meeting where all of the officials will be here and citizens can ask a question, get an answer, and then ask another question? This business where a person has to ask several questions and sit down doesn't work. People get confused, sometimes questions aren't answered, and again, the public wants the information. So, can we set up that meeting? And are people going to be able to talk to Stu and the manager's report about the petition?
I believe that you do know the rules for public comment. It's public comment. So, are, do you have anything else you want to say?
Well, I'm saying we followed the law, and we went out and got 500 signatures, and it's very discouraging that it isn't on the agenda. You know, I mean, it, this whole process has been very one-sided, in my opinion, and for manager's report, well, we always used to be able to ask the manager questions until a year or two ago. So, am I going to be able to have a dialogue with Stu because I believe that the Ben High petition is on the manager's report?
I'll remind you, Nancy, that you are very welcome to always go talk with Stu, and if something rises to the occasion that it really is confusion, we will certainly bring it to the meeting. As you know, there have been five, maybe six, maybe five, public meetings that were like an hour and a half long, that were back and forth. Anything you wanted to ask, we brought in all the experts every single time. Ask the experts anything you want. These are the people that understand the financing, these are the people that know the plans, these are the people that have been working on this all along, and they are very, very willing to answer those questions. So, this is, so, I've got to believe that your, your public comment time is up, and it is public comment. If there's something quick, like answering the Purple Heart question for Clark, we will do that. You're not, that's not what you're asking for, so.
Officials were required by the law to give us this opportunity. We took advantage of the opportunity and followed the law.
Okay.
I don't understand why you're not letting us have a discussion about this so that people get more information.
I'm sure there will be a discussion, but right now, there isn't. This is public comment.
Well, people need to understand why the vote needs to be held sooner rather than later.
Nancy? Nancy, you can ask your questions.
Jeanne, the law provides that, once the petition is received, the town either has a vote with 30 days' notice following the petition or at the next annual town meeting. As you know, my recommendation is at the next annual town meeting. That's where you get the greatest turnout for local questions, and that's, I think, an appropriate place for it. We haven't put it on the agenda here because the petition came in after the agenda was discussed and set. So, will, will the board make a decision at its next meeting? Potentially, yes, but more than likely, we would be, hopefully, having this question at the next annual town meeting.
It will be on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yes.
We'll have to vote on when to.
The board, the board has to make a determination whether it's going to do a vote now or later.
Well, I had to have a discussion with Stu in the parking lot after the last meeting about the petition, and it's a discussion the public had a right to hear. But again, people are watching these meetings, yes. Look at your watch, Jeanne.
We're way beyond, we're way beyond three minutes, Jeanne.
Oh, oh, we're way past three minutes.
I paused while you were speaking, but we've exceeded Nancy's three minutes of speaking.
Okay, all right.
I just want to make one comment for the public. There is an enormous amount of information on the website about this project, more than you probably will want to even look at. So, it is not true that the information is not out there. It is accessible to anyone, and if anyone needs help accessing the town website, you can go to the library, and there are very capable people, patient people, which will help you do that. Or you can probably even go to the town office and see, see the documents there.
If I could make one more comment, Madam Chair, I want to clarify the difference between public comment and asking questions regarding an agenda item. Public comment is three minutes, designed to be comment-driven. Conversation during a presentation, as we have hosted five or six times on the Ben High Project, has been interactive. I can't remember an instance where an individual was not allowed to ask questions. We typically go one round, and then we go back to see if people have follow-up questions. There hasn't been a time in my time on this board and during those presentations for the Ben High Project where everyone has not seemed to have spoken up to get their questions answered. So, that's the time for an interactive discussion, and as my colleague Jean Conner just said, all of the information is then captured and stored on the website. There's no lack of information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeanne?
Yes.
Also, the meetings where it was discussed are on the website, videos that you can watch.
Yes.
Go back and see what was said, what was asked, what was presented.
Yes. Thank you. Let's see. Martha Mackey on Ben High.
Martha Mackey, Bennington resident. So, I just had kind of a little bit of a general comment, a little background about myself. I grew up not too far from here in a working-class family, which I think a lot of people in Bennington can relate to. My family struggled to get by, a lot of kids, and something that was really essential for my family was public spaces because I think many of you know, there's so many places in our current society where you have to pay just to exist, and that can become really exhausting, both, you know, financially and with planning. So, public spaces for my family were really sacred, and that's something that I have started to really look for here in Bennington, to look, seek out those public spaces, and I've been really excited by the Riverwalk Project and the Ben High Project and to see what might come from that. And as a young person moving to a small town like this, I really value being able to bike places, being able to walk places. So, I would really love to see more things like that, and particularly in relation to Ben High. And maybe I've missed this, but I did review the last meeting on Ben High and the packet, but I would really love to see a little more information on like the communal space. There's a lot of information on the apartments and the rec aspect, but love to see more information on the public spaces, what exactly they offer to the community, and I would really love to see some community involvement on what like would really be valuable to us as members of the community. So, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, let's see. Homelessness, is that, is that your top, is that your topic, Sam?
Yes.
Okay.
Part of it, there's other, but. Sam Rustino, Bennington, Vermont. I just want to comment real quickly on the VFW American Legion about the Purple Heart. There's two places that come into Bennington, on the West End and on the South End, where you have all the fraternal organizations on that fenced-in area. Stusno is probably what I'm talking about, and quite frankly, the vegetation needs to be cut back so people can view that. Maybe we can locate Bennington, Vermont as a, as a Purple Heart community on that area right there. There are all other fraternal organizations, the Rotary, the Lions Club, the Elks. So, that's one place probably where you can put a sign. In regards to homeless, Friday night at Temple Beth El, I got educated real well, it was a great turnout. It was in regards to having a discussion about homelessness. Actual people that were, that are homeless spoke, the general public. One statement that was made, the, they're being receptive from Bennington is great. The problem is, housing is the issue. So, Bennington is communicating with, with the ones that are homeless really well. The problem is finding housing for these people. As well as the petition, we got 500 signatures. I want the vote to go up. I want 500 votes. Coming this Sunday, October 15th, you want to see a bunch of Corvettes come into town? You're going to fill the upper and lower parking lot of the public house. They did it last year, they're doing it again this year. A group from New Hampshire will be coming in mid-afternoon, so keep your eyes peeled if you are Corvette enthusiasts. October 11th, the emergency room opens up this past Wednesday. We start flushing the fire hydrants beginning today, for going on for two weeks. And it's just that I'm glad to see that Asher and Jack, who ran for Select Board members, are still vitally involved in the community, talking about the issues and being involved with the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. And Jack, Rossiter Munley, you're up next.
Hey, I feel like I just got an introduction. Jack Rossiter Munley, Bennington, Vermont. I am here, as I often am, to talk about the Community Cafe, but that is because, coming up on October 21st, Kelly's not here right now, but the cafe is going to be the featured community organization at the Wollumsack Riverwalk, which starts at 10:00 on Saturday, October 21st, at the park affectionately known as People's Park, right here in Bennington. The cafe program, as Lorraine and I mentioned at the previous Select Board meeting, has just continued to grow, not only in terms of how many people we see come on Saturdays, but also the number of people who are contributing and the number of local organizations that are contributing to the effort. And we're really excited to share the cafe with an even broader sort of cross-section of the community because we do want the cafe to be that gathering place, and we want to see more different people come in to volunteer and to just spend time during a cafe session. So, after the Riverwalk, we are going to have people, we will conclude at Greater Bennington Community Services, GBICs, at 121 Depot Street, and we will have a little sort of mini cafe session set up outside with some nice homemade treats that are representative of the kind of things that are at a cafe session, sourdough bread, homemade apple butter, pumpkin pies, a lot of sort of seasonal treats that fit well with being outdoors in Vermont in the fall, which is always a good experience. So, we're hoping to see lots of people there. Again, it's October 21st at 10:00 a.m. at People's Park will be the beginning of the Riverwalk, and then there will still be a full cafe session, excuse me, cafe session later that day. So, get excited and come join us. If you have any questions or you want to know anything about the cafe or get more information about attending the Riverwalk, benningtoncommunitycafe@gmail.com. I would like to personally, right now, invite all of the Select Board members to attend the Riverwalk. I know many of you are there anyway, and also, anyone who's here in the room and anyone watching on Cat TV, consider this your personal invitation to the Riverwalk on Saturday. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Jack. Is there anyone that hasn't spoken that signed up to speak? Because I could have missed somebody. There are a lot of names here. No? Okay, all right. So, with that, thank you all for sharing your thoughts. Let's move to the skate park presentation. So, I see Shannon Barsati, Community Development Director, and Dan Monks, Assistant Town Manager, moving to the front of the room. So, I'm going to turn it over to them. This is. This is, we are all very excited to hear...
Jean, Jean, can we perhaps mention that if people have questions during this presentation, we now have a microphone in the center of the room that those who would ask those questions would come to that?
Yeah, but we'll wait till they do their presentation, at least, the first...
You don't think there'll be questions? All right.
Afterwards, sure.
At the end, hopefully. I've been told that sometimes I fade off when I'm talking, so if I do, just start waving your hands and I'll know, and I'll try to continue to project. So I apologize. Last time I heard it was going in and out, so I'm going to try to stay projecting well throughout the presentation today. That's my goal. So first of all, this has been a great project, a lot of fun, met some great people. I think I skateboarded maybe once or twice in my life. I was very bad at it when I was a kid, so I didn't pursue it, but it's a lot of fun seeing, meeting all these folks who are very good at it, and they're spending a lot of time and effort trying to bring this amenity to our community. So that's been a lot of fun. I'm just going to kind of kick this presentation off and then hand it over to Shannon, but I wanted to give just a little history of where we've been with this project and the latest information and updates that we've been able to accomplish and work on. So this project, Skate Park in Bennington, was identified as a priority for ARPA funding. You all recall, we went through extensive public outreach process for that, and this was one of the top, if not the top one, in the top three for sure. There was a tremendous community outpouring of support for this type of amenity in our community. The skate park folks made a brief presentation to the select board after it was identified as a priority, and the select board authorized up to $5,000 to develop a preliminary design. Those folks were very frugal and have only spent $2,000 of the authorized funds so far for a conceptual design. The conceptual design was presented to the board, and the board authorized staff to continue working with the skate park team to move the project forward. So since that last time that we met with you folks, the team has been identified and formalized, and Shannon's going to present those folks, introduce those folks during her portion of the presentation. We've identified, when I say "we," the folks that are, the skate park team has identified a design-build firm that specializes in skate park design and construction, and they've committed to work with us. This is all they do all across the country, skate park, design-build, nothing else. Very impressive folks. We got to meet with the leaders of that firm recently. We prepared an updated and refined estimate that's still subject to change, as we'll talk about in the presentation, but we're getting closer. We developed a phasing plan and a schedule, which we'll talk about during the presentation, and we've identified a funding strategy, including having discussions with an accomplished fundraising firm, which we hope to consult with as we move forward. So that's where we are. That's just a quick update. We're going to go into more detail in the presentation, and Shannon, take it from here, and then I'll wrap it up in the end.
All right, thanks, Dan. So as Dan said, the skate park has strong community support, and we really learned that, we've learned that through various means, but particularly when we started talking about the ARPA funds. And so it was identified by the community, and we also know that skate parks provide with an initial investment of very low maintenance, you know, so they yield return on that investment. This is a photo of the Manchester Skate Park, so close to us, recently completed by Grindline Skate Parks, which is the design-build firm that Dan just mentioned. We also know that skate parks support people of all ages who wish to pursue active, healthy lifestyles by providing a safe, fun, and contained area to practice their sport. They also provide an outlet for youth who are not involved in traditional team sports, and they attract new business opportunities like skate retail shops and food concessions. So...
It's hard to hear you.
Oh, speak up, okay. I'll get closer. So we have a number of skate parks in our region of different scales. So the North Bennington Skate Park at the Lions Park has been there a long time. It's still very popular. The Powell Skate Park is also on a smaller scale and was recently developed within the last couple of years and has seen a lot of strong community support and visits there and panel center. Brattleboro, Manchester, and Burlington also have popular skate parks. So the team of the Bennington Skate Park, Cliff Dayton, who's not here tonight, it is a holiday this evening, but he was instrumental, he's a Bennington resident, was instrumental in developing the panel skate park, so he's been involved from our first meeting and just put up a new website for the Bennington Skate Park. It's just benningtonskatepark.com. And more will be coming as that progresses. We also have here tonight Nick Piedmonti and Sophie Piedmonti. So Nick was, he was here at the last presentation and was the owner of the cutting-edge, an indoor skate park here that was at the Benmont Mill. Also Glenn Sauer from the Village Garage Distillery, MSK Engineering, and Jeff Metcalf from Keefe and Westner Architects have helped with some of the initial site analysis and the conceptual design that was done by the platform group, which I forgot to mention here. And that is how we have our current cost estimates and renderings from that design group. And then Grindline has committed to be, to take that design further and refine the cost estimate and do the build-out of the park. I just, I thought I said Sophie. I think I was just quick. So Sophie is Nick's daughter and is also a graphic artist, an avid skater, and is going to be helping with some of the arts and fundraising for the project. Thanks, Dan. And once we get through this, these two will be available for any questions that you have, too. We just thought, instead of throwing them up here, we would get through the presentations. So Grindline, I wanted to pass this out, and I'll send this to everyone in an email as well. This is a statement I followed, and we did pass them around and look through some of the parks that they've built. They've been around since 2002 and have designed over 250 skate parks all over the world, mostly in the United States, but they have a few international parks as well. So the Bennington Skate Park team and the town staff have met with Grindline to begin planning a more detailed design and cost estimate. They've committed to the project, and they've designed and built the Burlington and the Manchester skate parks in our region, and they're excited to work with us here in Bennington and think about those parks as sort of a network and how they can relate to each other and sort of attract tourism, too, to visit the different parks throughout Vermont. So the cost estimates, we're thinking of this in two phases. Phase one being the outside skate park, which does not have a building or an interior bowl. So that cost estimate is $750,000. And then phase two has the building with the indoor space, and that's $700,000. So obviously, these are, you know, there's a lot of cost to develop these, and so it makes sense to do these in phases. The site and permit analysis is the next step for a more detailed cost estimate, really looking at the site along, as was mentioned, the People's Park, which is a town-owned property. It's close to downtown, walkable. This is a public space, so especially this outside park will be open to everyone at no cost, and we're hoping, and we do know that this cost will come down with in-kind site work. So we're looking at what kind of in-kind work we can have to bring the overall cost down for the project. And then these are the, this is the fun part, to look at some of these renderings from the platform group. So keeping, looking at the site, if you're familiar with the park and how it flows, you know, it curves along the Walmsack. The idea is to keep some of the trees that are there, that I believe were donated through NSK. And so those trees will be part of the design as well as the, some of the area, it's probably easier to see it here, if you're familiar with where the trees are now, to the right is currently part of the parking lot, so a bit of that space will be carved out for the park, but it won't take up too much of the parking that's there. It just gives some additional space for seating, et cetera. And then the vision is that the first phase, we go back, is really the outdoor part on the other side of the trees, and the second phase is the building, which you can see closer here. The idea is that it will also have a retail component, and you can see more closely the outdoor bowl. And then there's another close-up of that bowl. It looks similar to the photos of Manchester. And this is the indoor space. So the vision is that this can be a space that can be used throughout the entire year and that these large windows are going to be overhead doors so that during the kind of shoulder seasons, like as you're coming into fall or in the spring, you can open that up and get some nice airflow, but you can also enclose it for the winter. And there's the aerial view. So I'm going to pass it back to Dan for the fundraising.
So as we've mentioned at previous meetings, this would be, this project would involve a public-private partnership between the town and the skate park private folks, and so there would be a portion of town funding, and the balance would be covered by private donations as well as state and federal grants, of which Shannon has already been working on identifying possible grants. So the timeline for the fundraising is a six-month timeline for phase one, which is the outdoor portion, so we have a very aggressive schedule. We hope to build it this upcoming construction season. And then for completing phase, the fundraising for phase two up to a year, if fundraising goes really well, we'd love to just start phase one and go right into phase two. If we're not quite able to pull off all the fundraising for phase two in a timely fashion, that would probably slip to the next construction season, which would be 2025. Already, our private partners have met with, have had discussions with a fundraising consultant, very accomplished fundraising consultant, done many, many projects in Vermont. We have high confidence in that company's ability to help get these folks over the finish line with their donor outreach campaign. And as I mentioned, we're identifying grants and other funding opportunities, as well as in-kind donations to round out the funding for this project. Let's see. Just to kind of give you an idea of how this project will flow, it's pretty similar to most development-type projects. We're kind of down to the third step, working on that. We also have still some final site analysis to do, but then we'll go to construction documents and then the actual construction of the project. So this is a slide from Grindline. These folks have done this over 250 times, so they know how to do this. They're used to working with municipalities to put these projects together. They're actually, we're very happy to see that we are, that this project is already so far along with the conceptual design and at least a commitment from the municipality to consider significant funding for the project, and we've already identified a location. So this kind of just gives you an idea of the timeline. Again, just to remind everybody, all this will be on the website, so if you miss something or like, geez, missed that slide, that'll all be on the website. So what are we asking for tonight? That's the big question, I guess. So we have essentially two things that we're hoping that the select board will authorize town staff to continue to do. First one is that you'd authorize us to continue to work with the skate park team and Grindline to develop the design and cost estimates for this project, and that we, the second ask is that the select board releases up to $25,000 in ARPA funds or alternative funds for a site and permitting analysis and fundraising consulting services. We think that will get us to the point where we can say, this is how much it's going to cost, and yes, we can do it here in this location, and get a firm commitment to proceed from you folks after an update to you on the results of those, of the site analysis as well as the initial fundraising efforts. And we would hope to get back to you folks in 90 days with that information so that you folks could then decide, yep, we really want to go forward with this, and we're willing to contribute up to X amount of money contingent on the private donations, meeting the gap. Obviously, we wouldn't spend any money until all the money's in place and we have a contract with Grindline to proceed with a firm schedule, so no money at risk at all beyond the $25,000 until the project is fully funded. I guess that's it for now. I'm Shannon, and I'm here for questions. Nick and Sophie are here for questions, so I guess we can open it up to questions.
All right, so let's start with the board, as we always do. Any questions from the board?
I have one.
Okay, go ahead.
What's your guess on any staffing needs or maintenance needs and that sort of thing?
So very, very good question.
Yep.
We did talk about that. So for phase one, virtually no additional staff than what we have now. We already clean the park, mow the park, monitor the park.
Yep.
So we wouldn't see any additional staffing at that for phase one. Phase two, we've been talking to Nick and Sophie and others, and they're committed to, if that, if phase two is constructed, that there would be management through our private partners, there would be a formal agreement with the town about how that works and how that looks, especially we'd have to deal with the retail component, management of the site. How does, how was entry dealt with? Is there a minor membership fee? All of that. We don't have answers for that part yet. We have talked about those issues, but we have not had any consensus on that yet. We're going to keep working on that. That will be part of our update in 90 days, how we feel that will look. And as we do with other types of public-private partnerships, we put together, you know, a member-end of understanding, et cetera, in advance of a formal contract with whoever, with the management folks, so...
So that makes sense. As I was listening to the presentation, I was thinking that the needs are going to range, when you have no building, you know, we have current parks staff, we'll say, town staff. When we have a building, even if it's just a building that houses a bowl, there's opening and closing of those overhead doors, so there's a lot to consider there.
So we, yes, and we do expect that that will be a staffed facility with our private partners taking the lead on that.
Thank you.
I've worked in development/fundraising for many, many, many years, but I've never fundraised for a specific project like this, so it may be a little bit different. But I'm imagining for a fundraising endeavor to be successful and hopefully bring in, you know, some big donors, they're going to want the cost nailed down and everything nailed down before you, but I could be wrong. It may be different in this sort of situation.
Absolutely, absolutely. We will not begin fundraising efforts in earnest until we have a final conceptual design, relatively solid cost estimates.
Okay.
And everything is identified, and we can have the elevator speech and the one-page with all the pretty pictures and all the facts that go with it, and put together our donor list and have, you know, the group of folks that are working on this, we'll expand that group, and we'll be approaching individuals and corporations and institutions, et cetera, on, you know, with the project very finely, very definitively defined. We're not going to, and what will be extremely helpful is that we will have, by that time, hopefully, convinced the select board to say, yes, we believe in this project, and we're going to put X amount of dollars towards this so that when you go to donors and have that in hand and say, hey, we're already a third of the way there, 25% of the way, whatever it is, that's very helpful, and the fact that the municipality is willing to be the first money in, that's going to be very powerful to our donors as we proceed. These folks know all kinds of institutions and individuals that skate, you know, skateboarding is their life, it's their profession, so we're going to be able to put together, hopefully, a coalition of folks that'll be able to get us over the finish line on this one.
And when I mentioned large donors, we love large donors, of course, but if you can donate 50 bucks, 20 bucks, 10 bucks, that's fine, too.
Yes, we absolutely will also include crowdsourced funding, et cetera, as well. Typically, that comes near the end, after you've shown we're almost there, we just need you guys to help us get over the finish line, but all of that strategy will be worked on and worked out with the fundraising consultant. I don't want to mention the firm at this time, but I think once we do have that contract, you folks will, it'll be, oh, yes, that person, very successful. So, yes, so we're going to be moving... So, yes, so we're going to be moving forward with that in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions?
So the $25,000 is for that consultant, the fundraising consultant?
Combination of two things, actually three things. So yes, fundraising consultant, but also we have a formal proposal from our, from another member of the team, MSK, to do the permitting analysis and the site analysis. You know, we, we've done some preliminary work on it. We think it's feasible, but until we actually take a really close look, you know, things could pop up. We'll eventually have to do some geotech work, which is, would not be included in this, but that would be the first step, kind of the final step before we can feel comfortable that we can proceed 100% in that location.
And Grindline's will zero in on the cost to do the project?
They'll be doing, I'm sorry, I missed that question.
I said, and Grindline's would zero in on the cost and design of the project?
Yes, they're very, the only thing that they, they think they can get very close with the information we already have, with some additional meetings to kind of finalize some things. And then with a caveat that they'll need to see the geotech to get a final, final number. So the geotech report. So that, we'll have a contingency for that that we'll finalize, that we'll be able to narrow down once the geotech work is done. And for those who think, I don't know, geotech, what does that mean? That means they're going to do borings in the vicinity to find out, you know, is their ledge? What are they going to run into? Groundwater situation, et cetera, so that we know, are we, are we able to build what we want to build in that location? Do we have to shift it a little bit? Do we, you know, who knows? We may run into something that's completely unexpected, you know, not based on our preliminary conversations. That's not something that's anticipated, but until you actually put those drills in the ground, you can't know for sure.
Never know. The last question I had was just, are there grants for something like this?
I'll let the grant person answer that.
Yes, there are, thankfully. Usually, I think with the fundraising strategy, as I think Jean mentioned, you know, it's, it's, you want to have your final cost estimate and then you're going to really look for your, you know, larger donors or foundations. And then the grants are going to come in to help fill the gap. And then kind of, once you're like two-thirds of the way there, you open it up to do the crowdfunding and things like that. So I'm, I'm trying to identify the grants and going to be working with Sophie, Nick, and, and the rest of the team. So some of the, there's the Tony Hawk Foundation, which is known for skate parks, and, you know, they give a range of grants. Also, I think this would be an excellent candidate for the Better Places Program, if you're familiar with that. So that is a great program where the state will match, I think it's through the Agency of Commerce and Community Development, with some other partners in Vermont, and they'll match two-to-one crowdfunding. So if, for example, I think the most that they'll give is 40,000. So if we're able to raise 20,000 through crowdfunding, the state will kick in another 40, for example. There's also the Building Communities Recreational Facilities Grants, and the town is eligible for those, and this is town property. And there's, there are going to be others as well, but those are the ones that are kind of top of mind right now.
One thing I forgot to mention, what, the way we'll be dealing with donations, and we're not ready to solicit them yet, but we will be soon, is the town will be setting up a dedicated account so we can accept tax-deductible donations on behalf of the skate park. And it'll be reserved in an account and it, it won't, it won't be mixed with other funds. So, so when it does come time, we'll be able to, to, to accept those donations and, and, you know, move forward with the project with a clear reserve account for, explicitly approved for that project, so.
Can you, can you talk a little bit more about the timeline? So when you come back in 90 days, at that point, is the hope to have identified the, the costs and have started fundraising? Or, or is coming back to us the next step before you can sort of move forward with anything after you get information?
So as far as the fundraising, we'll, we expect to do all of the groundwork before the next meeting. But as far as formally kicking it off, we will probably want to wait until the Select Board says yes, because it's your property, it's the town's property. And we also want to be able to say, the town's in for X.
Yeah, okay.
And we got this gap to fill. We need everybody to help, help out.
And so the timeline is really up to 90 days. You're hoping that within the next three months, you nail down all of this?
Yes.
And you can come hopefully sooner.
Yeah, yes, yes. We would hope to be back sooner. We may be back in the interim if for some reason, you know, the site analysis says, you know what, you really should do the geotech right now because everything else looks great. Then we'll be back to say, okay, can we proceed with the site, the geotech analysis? So yes, our anticipate, we anticipate being back before 90 days, but we don't want to overpromise. And we would expect to have solid cost estimates with a, all the groundwork laid for the fundraising efforts. With a specific ask for you folks, this is what's going to be cost-wise. We know it can work in this location and we'd love for you to donate, or not donate, but reserve up to X amount of funds for this project.
Perfect. Can I also ask, just so, so it sounds like Grindline is like fantastic, would be a fantastic group to be working with. Are we, where are we in the size range for projects that they have worked on? I'm just looking at the cover of the, of the brochure that you gave us, and it looks like there's some very big parks that they have done.
Yep, Nick Piedmonte. So you're asking what have they built towards the square foot?
Yes, no, sort of where in that tiny to like humongous, like on that picture, where are we in that, in that range?
We, we would like to be, what is it, Sophie? 15,000?
15,000 square feet. And Manchester, I believe, is pretty close to that. Am I right with that? Come on over.
Sophie Piedmonte. Yeah, so we're looking at a skate park in a similar size to Manchester, which is approximately 15,000 square feet in comparison to like Burlington Skate Park, which is a little closer to 20,000 square feet. So this is definitely a sizable skate park that I think will attract a lot of skaters from a lot of different regions to come check out. But it's not like a monstrosity like some skate parks out in like California or Utah, so.
Great. And the, the network of skate parks is like, you guys have talked about this in the past, and it's such a wonderful idea. Do, do different skate parks have sort of like something that's unique to them? Or is it that just by the nature of it, they always, they always do? Or, you know, is it sort of like, oh, I want to go there because I want to do X thing? Or, you know, I know nothing about skating, as you can tell.
Yeah, so it's kind of like a spectrum of attraction for different skate parks. Definitely you're on the right track with thinking about like, oh, like I want to skate like a pool, a pool or a bowl, like pictured in the renderings. So that would be a big attraction to people to come to Bennington because Manchester doesn't have a full-size bowl like that, neither does Brattleboro. But like a place like A Dog in Burlington, they do have a large bowl, and that like brings like teams and people that are really excited to skate that. So the idea with working with Grindline and creating that network of skate parks is to like kind of complement them. So it's like someone that goes and skates Manchester during the day, like in the morning, they want to be like, oh, like I want to skate a pool, so I'll go to Bennington. So yeah, it's like more of a compliment to the other parks.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions from us?
I have one more follow-up.
Sure.
On the funding, when you guys come back in 90 days, will you be recommending an amount that this board authorizes to spend?
Yes.
So you'll, you'll suggest the number?
We will suggest the number based on, on available funds in the ARPA balance as well as possibly other funding sources that won't impact, that wouldn't involve new taxes.
Thank you.
Yeah. I just thought of this, you guys might already know this, but the Green Mountain Bus goes to Manchester and kids ride free. There you go.
Cool. All right, all right. So anyone from the community that has questions? Sam, and as Stu indicated, please sit at the table here. State your name, where you live, town you live in, name, rank, serial number.
Sam Rochino, Bennington, Vermont. The ones building the park, are they here tonight from Grindline?
So ask, ask.
Are the ones building the park, are they here from Grindline tonight?
No, they're not. Grindline is not here tonight.
Will they be in 90 days from then?
We can certainly request that, that it makes, it may make sense.
Because my question is, you know, the Northeast and concrete and cold weather. Mother Nature moves. You're digging a hole. You're telling me there ain't going to be cracks in this? Maintenance 20 years from now, 30 years from now? Right now, it's going to be a wonderful homeless shelter for, for the homeless once this gets built. We've got Willow Park, a pretty penny. Ben High, a pretty penny. Now this one's a pretty penny. What's next on our Christmas list?
I'm going to assume that was a rhetorical question.
In 90 days, will you have the total cost for Phase One and Phase Two?
That is what we anticipate. There may be some contingencies, but yes, we'll have a much more solid understanding of the cost.
Before the project starts, will we know as citizens what the total cost of Phase One and Phase Two will be?
Yes, you will, but I just remind, we're not asking for the Select Board or the public to fund all of this. We're just asking for, we will be asking for a specific maximum amount. So if there are cost overruns, they would have to be covered by donations or grants before we would begin the project.
When are you going to know what the cost will be to the taxpayers to maintain the park, especially the building?
Well, we would say that the, we've already said in the presentation that there would be no additional cost for the outdoor portion and that if there was any cost with regard to the, to the building, that would be covered by the management team that we would enter into a contract with to manage the project.
So the utilities, the insurance, the maintenance, who's going to pay for the, for the building?
All that will have to be worked out. So we don't have, I don't have definitive advantage for that.
Well, I thought this was going to be a town facility when it's done.
It will be owned by the town, yes. It will be managed by a private entity, private nonprofit.
Is there a municipal park in the state where a private group of citizens is managing a municipal skate park? I just think I could see liability issues with that.
That's why we have insurance and do it all the time. Public-private partnerships happen all over the country.
So is there a municipal park in the state that is run by, by volunteers, private citizens? You don't know? Does anybody know? The trees at the park, they're not going to be touched?
The plan indicates that a good portion of those trees will be saved. I can't say for sure what the final design will be, but whatever it is, will have to be approved by the board.
Because most of the trees, like Stu said, last year were donated by the Japanese families who came and worked at NASDAQ, and they donated them as a thank you before they went back. So I would think if you're talking about moving those trees, don't you need a, the state requires a public hearing, correct? Well, I do know.
Well, so I'm going to turn it over to our tree warden, who happens to be in attendance.
If, if we are contemplating removing any of those trees, we would have to make a determination and have a public hearing, should one be requested.
So it's exactly the same as for the Riverwalk?
I thought the state automatically required it on public property.
Only if requested.
Okay, I'm requesting it.
Thank you.
Are we, are we going to be paying for a fundraising consultant with ARPA money?
That's the request, yes.
Okay. Did Manchester have a fundraising consultant?
I had no idea, Nancy.
Well, I know people, citizens fundraised for 20 years, especially the past five or six years. And I'm just curious to know Manchester Park, I think it was about $800,000. I'm looking at this park being about 1.4 million. And I just wonder how much, I have no idea what you pay a consultant to do. I just wonder if this is something we could do on our own. You're going to do a study on the impact on the river? Whether the state or feds require it or not?
We will do whatever is required by state and federal permitting.
So if they don't require it, we're not concerned about the Walooza Act?
Nancy, I think you know, as well as everyone, that the state and federal regulations are extremely protective of the river, so anything they require, we will do.
Well, I would just hope we would do the study if it wasn't required. What's going to be the security? Everybody knows the four-story building for the Tuttles property has been approved. Some of the people renting apartments are going to be told they have to park in this lot. People working second and third shift, people who are going to be coming and going early and late shouldn't have to worry about people hanging around there. And I said before, I'm not concerned about the skaters. I'm concerned about the other people who may be there. So what will be, the security be that we're offering the people?
The design will include lighting and security cameras at the, at a minimum.
Is it going to be fenced?
There's no plan for fencing.
Since the police department reopened the park earlier this year, do you have any statistics? How many time have the police and the rescue squad been called back to the park since then?
Oh, no, I don't.
That, that's something we should know. Okay, that said, I just, I would hope in 90 days you have the total cost because I think that's important for the public to know. I, I think it's unfair to do Phase One and say, well, we'll get Phase One due and then we'll worry about Phase Two. I think we really need to know as the public. And we need to know what the building is going to cost.
I do want to remind you, this is a public-private partnership again. So in the same, many of these questions you've asked at the last meeting on skate park, and you've asked some of these same questions for Ben High. And so I, I do want you to remember that in a public-private partnership, that means that it's a partnership. So not everything is going to be on the public side or on the private side. And I think what Dan is letting you know is that just as it went with Ben High, as we came, each time that staff has come to us, they've had more information and they've tried to give us more clarity on what the responsibilities are, what the costs are going to be. And I think as Dan keeps saying, what we're talking about is using part of our ARPA money. So that is, that's, you know, that right now is, is the intention.
Okay, but the public part?
Which is not taxpayer, which is taxpayer money, but it does not come out of your taxes.
But when the park is finished and even when the park is underway, I mean, are town officials going, are town employees and equipment going to need, needed to assist with who's going to be building the park?
Well, there was some discussion about in-kind could be, could be helpful.
It's possible. We're not going to commit any DPW employees or our DP Department to do anything until we've discussed it with them. And if it makes sense and they have time and there's a way to save money, then we would consider it. But there's, the cost estimate will be as if the DPW was not going to do the work, and then we may bring it down if, if we are able to have the DPW do some of the work. You have to remember, it's town property, not private property. So it is our property.
Town property owed and paid for by the people of Bennington. That's why it's critical we understand what the cost will be to us. And as far as the grants go, if you can get grants for the skateboard park, how come we're not getting grants for the half a million dollars of work we need to do at the rec center?
Yeah, I think you need to stay on topic, and I think.
It is on topic.
And you've asked that question several times and it's been answered several times, so I suggest that you talk with Stu so that you get, you get your information correct.
I just don't understand why we have people that can get grants for specific projects, but they can't get grants for regular things that we've paid for for 50 years.
Yes, please.
Tyler Colfan, Bennington. I really am supportive of the project and really value your presentation and what you're doing here in Bennington. Similar to what Martha said earlier, I really value the public spaces here in Bennington. And I personally think it's apparent that Bennington has a shortage of accessible public green space and an abundance of parking. So my question would be, why not just build the skate park in its entirety on the parking lot, which is very large and unattractive, rather than in any way disrupting the, the grounds of the park itself?
So I wouldn't disagree with you. So, um, I wouldn't disagree with you. But I think that there, there are several folks in this community who feel that parking is a limited amenity. So we did try to avoid impacting the parking as much as possible. That being said, when the final design comes down, it may impact more of the parking lot than we initially anticipate. And we do, we are very sensitive to making sure that it remains an attractive green space location, but agreed. I will, I'll only say that that parking lot, we do expect that to take a lot of parking from other developments around it. And so it, I think it is a valuable amenity. I don't know if we need as much parking as we have. I mean, we have the parking out here, we have the parking over there. But other folks disagree. But we'll, we'll certainly balance those, those needs between the two very important projects.
How much percentage of the skate park do you foresee being on like the parking lot grounds versus the park grounds?
So that, this design could change over time, but I would say the current design's probably 15% to 20% in, on existing parking. The rest would be on the existing park. That could change depending upon what we find with the geotech. It could change with what we can or can't do in the flood, floodway. These are all regulatory things that we have to look at, which is why we need to do this site and permit analysis so we can get that design just right, and we can understand the cost implications. It might, you know, for instance, the reason this is so important, it might be, hey, if we leave it, you know, within 30 feet of the river, it's going to cost us an extra $300,000. But if we move it over 20 feet, we save $200,000. So, you know, those are the kind of decisions that we're going to make in the next 90 days as we, as we nail down exactly where that's going to go on the site.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Clark?
Do you have any say 20% of the parking?
No, of the skate park.
Yeah, good evening again, Clark Adams. The construction of this facility, will local builders and of course residents get priority for completing this? You know, basically jobs here in town. What is that going to do to help people of Bennington and the businesses of Bennington?
So we've already had these, we've already had discussions with Grindline. They are, they are not a local firm, but they use local labor. I know that up in Manchester, they use local labor. They'll be looking to us and our private partners to, to point them towards local contractors, et cetera. As we mentioned, there may be a possibility of some in-kind work by our DPW department. But I know that, if you know, the, the partners that we are involved with, they have lots of contacts with local contractors, and I'm sure they're going to make sure that those, those folks are, are part of the, part of the team.
Okay, I just wonder, is that part of this entire process? You know, basically putting out feelers to organizations that, hey, be aware that this is coming down the pipe, that this project is out there, and we'd like local people involved to the greatest extent possible?
That will definitely be part of it. We won't, we're not going to, these folks aren't going to bring in, for instance, excavators from California to do this project. They're going to use folks, excavators, local excavators. They're going to buy local concrete. You know, you can't bring concrete from too far away, as you know. So this will very much be a local effort. With a, with a national firm, highly credentialed, highly experienced, leading the project.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes.
So first of all, I would like to second what Tyler said on the parking. I would love, love, love to see as much of the green space preserved. There's a huge shortage of green space in town, which is essential for people's health and well-being. And also the trees to be preserved would be amazing. Tangentially, I would love to see a study that actually shows how much parking we are taking up in town, because from my perspective, there's always way too much, so.
I would just say, your perspective is accurate. The perception out there is that there's not enough, and so we fight with that.
And Dan, there is a study. It's a little dated now, but actually BRCRC did do a parking study, and it showed we had way more parking than needed.
Yes. Like most towns.
But, but, I mean, but it also didn't anticipate. It was before much of the most recent development happened, so.
Okay. A question I have is, will there be bathroom, public bathrooms and public water fountains available on site?
So currently, the plan includes that there would be public rest, there would be restrooms. Part of the reason that it's going to be important that it be staffed is that those restrooms be monitored, et cetera, so they're appropriate. And I hadn't really thought about the water, but I'm sure we're going to have, we're going to have water source. People can fill up their water bottles, et cetera, there.
Yeah, get one of those that has like, specifically for water bottles?
Yes, the water bottle filling stations, especially for people that are going to be actively using the park.
Awesome. And yeah, I think, again, I, I really value public spaces. Love that this is central walking distance for most people. You mentioned a potential membership fee, predictable. I'm going to say I don't love that idea.
So just to be clear, I just want to, it would, if there, if there was a membership fee, it would be only for the indoor portion during specific events, et cetera. And it is very likely that we would, as we do with the rec center, subsidize local folks if there was any issue with cost.
Okay.
But the outdoor park, no contemplation, except possibly if they have a, you know, a national competition, they might sell tickets or something like that, but not for everyday use at all.
Okay, that's amazing. Alibi, it's a lot of my concern. And I would also love if, yeah, if we even considered making it free for town, people who live in town. I really think it's important, you know, this is a huge resource for young people to, you know, stay out of trouble, stay fit, stay active. So I think it's really, really important that we remove as many barriers as possible. But I love what I'm hearing, so thank you.
Thank you for those comments, very appreciated.
Thank you. Yes, Sam. Oh, wait, sorry, Sam, you've already been up once. Tortis, come on up.
Tortis Israelhart, Bennington. I didn't spot it on the rendering. The question is whether or not there's an accommodation for parents and grandparents to be watching, or adults to be watching other people's children and grandchildren.
So the answer is very much yes, that spectators, parents, friends, family members, et cetera, would be, have lots of places in which to view the activities that are going on. If we see that as, you know, not just the folks that are using the park actively, but also folks that are enjoying what's happening there. Also using the park as a park itself, walking along the river, et cetera. So this, we, we certainly want this to be an inclusive experience and not exclusively for one group. So, very good question, but absolutely part of the plan, part of the thinking initially, and we will continue to think of ways to make it as accessible for everybody as possible. One of the things when they identify, when they design this park, you know, they're very careful to be, to make it a park that could be used by folks of all skill levels. So you might just be a beginner or a young person, or you might be almost professional level, and you would have, you'd have the ability, or there'd be features of this park that you could enjoy. I don't know that, because I'm not a skater, but I've been told that by the folks that do skate, so I believe them. And I do, that was part of the DNA of this project from the beginning.
Super. Sam, you're up.
Sammerstein of Bennington, Vermont. Dan, in relation to that photograph that's up there, where's North Street and where's Waloosak River?
Okay, yeah, we should have had a site planned here. So if you look to the left of that, that's where the river is. Depot Street would be at the bottom, and then the, the...
Okay, so if I was standing on Depot Street, I'd be looking into the parking lot area, and where that little corner is, that's where the...
Yes.
The building, okay, just to get an idea on that.
Yep, no, and we should have, that's, that's, we should have included the initial site plan so folks could see the area. If you go on the website, you, they have a great little fly-through you can see as well as the site plan.
Right, but the proposal's done tonight, is that on the website? I just tried to look for it, and I didn't see it. Will it, will it be on the website?
That, there's a...
No, this proposal that you're doing right now, I didn't see it.
This PowerPoint will be put up on the website, yes.
Okay, because it's a little more clearer than what it, what has been proposed. Yes, the video looks great, but this is a little more brick and mortar type thing for me to understand what's going on. Second question, we have a packet, we have an agenda. Why wasn't this included in this week's packet? If this was in the packet, I would have shared it, and I would have got people a little bit more instigate into it. This is very important information. Why was it left out in the packet?
To be honest, it wasn't completely ready till today, but we'll, we'll be on the website. It will be on the website tomorrow, and you can share it tomorrow.
Well, in the near future, when we discuss agenda items, I really would like to see, for better discussion, when we have a packet, the more information we have in that packet, the better myself and the residents can get a clearer picture of what we're talking about. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, please.
Sorry, just one more small question. Is there a bike parking included in the design?
So if it's not included in the design, it will be required as part of our permitting requirements. So I guarantee that we bike parking, and we'll make sure that we, that we have enough bike racks designed appropriately to meet the need. Because we, you're right, this is going to be a place where we expect youths to come with their bicycles. Nothing worse than not having enough bike racks to secure, securely.
Just a recommendation, I know there's a variety of different types of bike racks used. The staple type is widely supported as being the most effective and not damaging to bikes. So if you do a little research on what is the best type?
What's the type that you said?
Staple, it's the, like this.
Yeah, the, kind of the loops.
Yeah, or that, but not like the wavy ones or any other fancy designs, like the simple staple, that's the way to go.
We, we work with a regional planner at the Regional Planning Commission, Regional Transportation Planner, and he's all about bikes, and he's always harping on, you've got to have the right design, and you've got to have enough of them. So we'll make sure to do that.
Perfect, awesome, thank you.
Great. Any other questions from board or public? Yes.
I don't have a question, it's more of a comment. And I just, I don't want the public to walk away from this discussion thinking that the reason Dan couldn't answer many questions was that he didn't know. It's that the questions are premature. And these projects, we've all been down this road before, take a long time, and they're step by step by step. And we present, our responsibility is to present information, make sure it's accessible to the community. It is the community member's responsibility to access that information and educate yourselves. So I just, for people that are interested in this, dig in and stay with us, step by step by step, and all the questions will be answered over time.
We, we will not ask the Select Board to commit funds until we feel confident that the design is true and that the, that the estimate is, is within, you know, reasonable accuracy. So all that will be hopefully part of the next presentation. If it's not, we'll explain why we're not there yet, if there's something that's come up that we, that we weren't able to handle in time. Hopefully, next time we'll have close to a final conceptual design and a good, solid cost estimate, as well as have laid all the groundwork for our fundraising efforts.
Super. All right, so then, I think we're looking for a motion from one of us to authorize staff to continue to work with the team, the skate park team and Grindline on design and cost estimates, and also to commit $25,000 in ARPA funds for site and permitting analysis and fundraising consulting services.
Second.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All right, hearing done, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Excellent.
Thank you very much, very much appreciate your support, and we'll be back.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that was, okay, and we're moving from that really wonderful discussion to the brush pile fee discussion again. Thank you very much. Stu, you're up.
Thank you. We've talked about this over the last couple of meetings. I did prepare a memorandum that you folks have been provided with. However, I'm changing my recommendation after consideration, once this was in the packet. I'm recommending a flat fee of $60 for commercial haulers and a $5 per load for residential customers, and that would be anything larger than two 30-gallon bags of sticks that might fit in your trunk. That's my recommendation, and I don't think I need to get into all of the other.
Do we need a motion?
You would need a motion.
We will need a motion.
Is it too early for that motion? Because I would second it if we're not too early.
Um, I think it's fine, and then let's have discussion.
Okay, so I'm going to second that motion.
Okay. Discussion, please. Did you have...
You did a good job, Stu.
No. All right, so...
I, I actually just want to, I just want to say that I appreciate going back and doing this, and this is a good compromise, in my opinion.
Thank you. I like, you did a good job on this. It's reasonable for the taxpayers, you know, responsible for taking it up there. And I think it's a reasonable fee for commercial operation.
Great, okay, any other, any other thoughts? Yes.
Um, Stu, does this remedy the backup with the scale and...
It, it will help with the backup with the scale. Remember, a lot of, a lot of commercial haulers and a lot of, a lot of residential folks use the scale, and they want to be charged by the ton, depending on the amount they're bringing in. So this will alleviate some of those concerns. We still have, we still have issues with probably some long lines sometimes during the week, but we can't remedy those at the present time.
All right. Any other discussion, any public comment on this?
Just, if I could ask one question, just to be clear, the cost per ton is not, we're not doing that anymore. It's just $60.
It's just $60 a load.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions, comments from the public? Yes, please, come on up.
Could you define a load? The guy with the huge five-ton dump truck versus the guy with his Dodge Dooley? That seems a bit uneven. Commercial haulers who bring this material in, they bring it in generally anything half-ton pickup or larger. We currently charge by weight. It creates problems for us and slows the process down. This would be a flat fee of 60 bucks. So if you've got a pickup truck and you're a commercial hauler and you're loaded, it's 60 bucks. If you bring in a three-and-a-half-ton dump and it's loaded, it's 60 bucks.
If I could interject there? Stu, that's the, as I remember from your last presentation, that's the average of what those commercial haulers are charging or paying?
It is the average that we have seen over the last year, charging at $120 a ton.
So the goal here was to not change the cost to commercial haulers?
That's correct.
Yep, thank you.
And is this consistent with Addison County? No, that's 60, that was $6, never mind.
Most of, most of the solid waste districts charge a per-ton cost with a minimum charge. So it, but everybody gets charged, residential and commercial customers.
So we're still maintaining two small loads are free, otherwise residential is $5.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you've got a couple of small limbs that come down in your yard, and you can, you can fit those into your trunk or into two 30-gallon bags, you're going to be able to dump those for free.
Okay. Any other, any other questions from anyone? All right. So all those in favor of, so it would be, so the, the plan would be no charge for two 30-gallon bags from customers, $5 a load for residential customers otherwise, and $60 flat fee for commercial loads. Yes?
Yes.
All right, all right. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions?
And this will be publicized, I'm assuming, somehow?
So we have...
Yes, we propose to have it take effect at the end of October, October 30th. So there'll be time for the transfer station to let folks know who are coming in, and we'll also post it on our, our various sites.
Maybe the banner would do a little.
I'm sorry?
Maybe the banner would do a little article.
I unfortunately can't control the banner, but I'll do it.
I know, yeah.
I don't see anybody here from the banner tonight.
But they watch.
They do.
All right. So manager's report is up?
No, actually, there's a re...
No, neighborhood development grant, sorry.
Yes, this requires a signature by the board, and Shannon's going to do a very quick presentation.
Okay. Not really a presentation, but just an explanation. I'm preparing... I'm preparing an application for, it's called the Community Partnership for Neighborhood Development Grant, and it's offered through the Vermont Agency of Commerce and Community Development. So the purpose of this grant program is to support planning, site, control, design, scoping and surveying for the development of transformative projects, particularly for housing, focus on smart growth, so this is a perfect project for the Ben High redevelopment, because that's a project focused on the smart growth principles of being downtown and walkable to many social services. So if awarded, the funds would be granted to the town, and then sub-granted to Hale Resources, our private partner, in, for the pre-development work, such as the construction design fees, the construction design is underway now, so the timing is good, it's due at the end of the month, and I would just be looking for a motion for the select board to approve this resolution. It authorizes Stu, as the town manager, to apply and expend grant funds and be the authorized official on any documents for the grant.
Second? Any discussion? Discussion in the public? Yes, Sam?
It was mentioned, Sam Rostino, Bennington, Vermont, it was mentioned in the packet about this grant, didn't mention the dollar amount, what's the dollar amount that we're talking about for this grant?
Well, we're still developing the application, it will probably be around $300,000 in the application for pre-development costs.
So why was that information left out in the packet?
Well, we haven't finalized the number yet, so I don't have the exact number.
Well, you could at least candidly talk about it, give us an idea, saying, well, okay, we're applying for grant money, how much, there again, we are not educating the people, and you're leaving us in the dark, I don't want to be a mushroom.
All right, any other comments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, great.
It does just authorize the chair to sign, so it's coming your way.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. All right, now we're at the manager's report.
Yes, thank you. As you folks know, and there was a very good story in the banner and posted on our sites as well, PFAS have been found in Bennington in two, potentially three new areas, although the two of the areas are very close to one another, Stonehedge Drive and Jefferson Heights, as well as South Shire Neighborhood, which is further to the south, and on Hickory Hill, which is a development that was done east of town, south of Rutanine, just outside the former village limits. Great presentation by the state, came down, spent some time with, about 60 people attended the meeting, some very good questions, we actually had people from Shasberry come, because there are some issues developing there as well, but the state is looking to secure funds for a study, and ultimately, if possible, to resolve the issues that the residents may have. Those resolutions may include connections to town water, much as has happened throughout the community, or other solutions such as poet systems or drill new wells where municipal water is not available. So I'm just looking for a very broad motion to allow the town to continue to work with the state to pursue funds as soon as possible, because those deadlines have not yet been established.
Thank you.
I would second that.
Great. Any discussion? I would just like to say that Stu and Jason Dolmich from MSK did an excellent job of answering questions for maybe 45 minutes without any pre-notification that they were going to be asked to do that.
Yeah, that was the beauty of it, yes.
And they did do a very, very excellent job.
Well, thank you.
So. Any questions? Public have any questions? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, excellent.
Further, I'm going to try to speed through this, the town has been approved to participate in the Municipal Energy Resilience Project, which is a state-funded, state-driven project. The structures or the, the buildings that we have been approved to study are the Department of Public Works on Bowen Road, the town offices, the Recreation Center, the Bennington Fire Facility, which we sit in tonight, and the Bennington Police Station. And I'm not sure there's another.
That's it.
There is not, good. These, these funds will be allocated through a process where engineers and the appropriate professionals will be hired and pursued through cooperation with the State of Vermont. One of the issues that we do intend to look at, that has been brought to our attention by not only town staff, but by others, is geothermal energy potentially at the Recreation Center. So that will be ongoing, the town has been selected, so I'm pleased with that. I'm not going to talk about the petition, we've already discussed that, and I just follow up on the compost at the transfer station, that fee has been eliminated effective October 1. I don't have any update as to whether or not that has spurred additional activity at the transfer station, but that followed your vote at the last meeting, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the town manager from the board? No? All right, upcoming agendas, so what we are anticipating on October 23rd is Adam Sansic coming, who is the manager, the?
He'll be talking about the housing crisis.
Right, manager of, whatever.
Agency of Human Services.
Agency of Human Services, thank you, yes. The Energy Committee is coming to give us their yearly update, and hopefully the health, we'll do the Health Department, the Health Dashboard, is that? Okay, all right, so that's tentative, but we were awarded, we were included in a Health Dashboard project.
And we will have the, we will have the question of whether or not to place the petition on the annual town meeting or hold a special meeting.
Yes, we will have that, that's true. Okay, all right, and then hopefully in November, YMCA will be coming to talk with us about the summer and early fall, and then in November, December, Shires would like to come and talk about new projects on housing. Yeah? Other?
As you folks know, we've begun the process of updating, renewing the town plan, Phase 1, we're going to be looking for funding to do Phase 2, I won't get into the details, but we'll be here next meeting just to get your approval to apply for a municipal grant to fund the Phase 2. We already have funding for Phase 1, so that'll be on the agenda too.
Thank you. All right, other business, Sarah?
Yeah, I mean, there's so many great things going on in town, but tomorrow is my husband's birthday, so I want to send him a happy birthday, yes, I'm getting, getting laughs around here, but yes, I'm going to wish my, the best coworker one could have, a happy birthday tomorrow, so happy birthday to Michael Nygros.
Great.
Yeah, briefly, Harvest Fest is this coming weekend, and the Bennington Community Market is going to have their own version of it, there'll be pumpkin painting free for kids, and Natasha is going to bring some of her crazy, beautiful chickens for kids to pet. There'll be music, and other people, other vendors with tents outside, and I think it looks like it'll be a fun event.
Great, thank you. All right, well, with that, we have need of an executive session to discuss contracts, we do not, we will not be making a decision when we come out of executive session, so we will bid you all a fair good night, and thank you very much for coming.